Hi.
Hi, Phil Rickman.
Hi.
All right, so can we start with the first row? I know you you were here early if you want to.
I'm second row, right? I don't think I'll take my full three minutes, but I thank you, I guess, for lowering the proposed tax rate. As the valuations increase, we all pay more. Can't name it as Roger Borthman, 324 University Circle Council, 1503. So, as I said, thank you for proposing lowering the tax rate, but as valuation increase, we all pay more out of pocket anyways. And I would be considered a small farmer by most standards. And with our increase, if I figured right, we're going to be paying 377,000 dollars more per year in our taxes. The larger farmers will be paying five, 10 times that, which agriculture in these coming years is not going to be very profitable. With the prices we have to pay for everything and commodity prices going down, so there's not going to be that much money available to pay extra taxes. If I figure right, it looks like you're going to be taking in about just under 1% more money than than what you did last year for what you put. I guess everybody in here is probably under the same opinion, we don't want to pay more taxes. I'll even it down.
Thank you, Roger. Next. This is a public hearing, this is the opportunity to hear from the public.
My name is Larry Fiveman, 309 North Bilder at Carson. And I want to thank you for this mailing hearings, it was kind of nice and pretty nice. When I read through it, looked at the back, I thought there was a conflict of information. On the front, we're raising taxes, and I'm not, I don't, not going to comment there. And the tax rate goes down. When you do a little calculating here, the whole valuation in order to come up with the money you need has to go up. Now, in the back, the examples given, you use the same valuation for the current taxes. And the new valuation, the same valuation could be lovely. And it shows that the taxes go down. Now, you're going to spend about 6% more with the taxes going down, and when it's part of the data fast. Okay? So... When we got, in March of 23, you got the sense.
You got it. Good job.
It's good. Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Larry.
March of 23, I got an increase in the, in assessing valuation, and I understand that's different than tax for us. The farm land went up 37% on this example, and the house in town went up 26%. And so I, I have, um... My concern is, the message on the front is different than the one on the back. And that goes to you guys' credibility. And I see at the bottom, there's someplace to contact in Des Moines. And I chose not to do that, I come here because of your credibility and state. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Larry. Next.
Hello, Duane Barrier, 26 West West Village. I also have properties in the Newland District and Crainer District. Just to give you some numbers that I've seen similar to what he just said, your budget went up 41.6 million to 43.9. And that's a 5.4% increase, does that sound right? And if, I'd like to know what you're spending that on. Because a lot of people I know that are retired don't get that much of an increase. And I think for each of our cities and our counties and our schools, they need to go back to a zero-based budgeting instead of just increasing year over year. Maybe rethink how we're, you know, spending our money, because that is very important to everybody in the county. Also, assessments went up, you know, my one property went up 40%, the other one up 23%. You know, state doesn't, doesn't give us a very good way of calculating because they have the rollback on top of that. I do appreciate you guys lowering your rate, but at the same time, the assessment going up so high, you know, in the increase of people's taxes. So, is there one guru that really knows, you know, how all that calculation comes through and how much, you know, that's affecting people? I don't think that's the case. So Iowa needs to simplify their tax revenues. I also would recommend that the city has a nice tax calculator out there on their website, that maybe you can put that on the county website too, so people in the county knows how to calculate the taxes. But if you can comment on what the increase of 5.4% is, where that money's going, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane.
Well, next. Diane McMakin, 626 Ridge Road, North here in Council of Austin. You can see I have several different school districts that take utilize our tax dollars. I do know everything that's been said so far, and citizens. The bottom line is, every year that we come in and pay our property taxes, I'm paying more on every house and every farms out there. And yet, everything, with inflation, our income is not going up, if anything, is being utilized and going down. I'm not sure, I know that obviously the school districts are asking for more, along with the city. I do know that, remember back in 2000 roughly, fair for there, 1% sales tax was voted on, all that went to the schools. I'm assuming that that's still in effect, I have not seen a rollback when I go and buy groceries or clothing, whatever. So that is still in effect, the schools are getting all of that. We voted on a bond that remodeled Kern Wilson, I know we went through remodeling AL and TJ. And it just seems like every year, then we need more, 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 more. Well, what about businesses who have to budget their money? That there's a place, us as people, you know, household, we have to budget, we have to live within our budget. And I would ask that the schools and the city and the county all learn the same, do the same that we all have to do, whether it's a small business, a large business, or a citizen household, we budget. And we have to live within that. And if it means making some cuts somewhere, we just have to do it, you know? So, taxes again, I pay more every year, that's the main line. And I look at that bottom line, and I bless their hearts for being able to point out all the details. I'm just telling you, I'll show you my checks, I pay more all the time. And somewhere along the line, this has got to stop, especially with inflation the way it is. It has to stop because it's not a good trend, and we need to reevaluate. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Tell me, spell your last name, please.
McMakin, M-C-M-A-K-I-N.
Who's next?
Remember, you came here to speak, and now's the time to speak. And I learned something many years ago, come speak your piece, whether your voice shakes or not, so please step forward.
I just have a simple question.
Yeah.
Randy Canal, Tielo November Echo Lima Lima. 1985, Northern Pine Road. Why's the meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning? You know, you got a lot of people here, but I bet most of them are retired. What about all the people who are working? They can't make this. You got a few people who are coming on the computer, how about doing a nighttime meeting?
We, we have done a few of them.
Well, I think as important as this is, it should be mandatory that it's a nighttime meeting, so that people tend to express their concerns or whatever. So, that's all, just let's put them at night where people are rather than, you know, eight to five. Thank you. Thank you.
Randy? Next.
Mary Deason, 19298 Jefferson Avenue, Crescent. I'm really not going to say anything more, I thought Diane really hit it, what she said, I think it's how all of us feel. Every time you turn around, everything is going up. A lot of us are retired, but what I make is not going up. I agree with her and everybody else, we have a budget at home, if you have to follow. And the answer is not, every time something happens, to increase the tax stuff. I mean, I look at the top, what they just passed, that trillion dollars is just to me unheard of, what we're doing as a country. So to me, it has to stop, start here. And no one likes to have things cut, but I think we need to look at it, whether it's the school district or county or whatever, it's got to start someplace. And if you're able to articulate why it has to be, I think people understand, because I agree with her, the inflation, it's gotten out of hand. And that's why I'm here, and I'm not really speaking anything that anyone doesn't know. I don't know what the answers are, but I think it's important that we start dealing with it because, like I said, it's getting done here. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Next.
County Board only has jurisdiction over the levy, that's all we can do is work the levy, so.
Shawna Anderson, 19377 340 Street. I'm not going to speak in very nice, usually I stay here and listen to the board speak and see what's going on in the county. I learn a lot, and sometimes I speak at public comment at the end of the meeting. But I do find this interesting, I know that, you know, with inflation, things have gone up, I expect my tax dollars to go up. It's just unfortunately how like this, you're born, you pay taxes, you die, right? But listening to some of you speak about the differences in paying attention to your budget, I will say the county has a budget. And some of that budget could be cut. Some of our county officials are paid six-figure salaries and have plenty of employees doing that work for them. So, I will say that, you know, most of this board voted against raising their own salaries, which was pretty amazing. Not all of the support, so pay attention to those things before you go to the voting booth. Because plenty of these folks here are making quite a bit of our tax dollars. So sometimes it's not about just increasing or decreasing our taxes, it's looking at where our tax dollars are being spent. You know, those schools, unfortunately, the state is setting their funding left and right, so our county is stuck at making up. You know, I will be the, the person who goes against everybody and, you know, devil's advocate here, our county is trying to make up for it with the state and with the federal government, and cutting what it is for schools, as well as they can here, I'll stand up for it. But looking at what some of the county officials are making, there could be a lot of cuts there. So just, you know, I would just say to the public to pay attention to that. And the job that the county does sitting up here is definitely hard. So paying attention to what they're looking at makes a big difference when you get those letters sent out. Thank you.
Okay, Shawna. Anyone else?
I have one point I forgot, may I come up second time? Diane McMakin, 626 Ridge Road, North, Council of Austin, Iowa. I did have on my notes here, the, that she brought up about the tax, that money is following the students now to whether they choose the, a private school or homeschooling. I'm not sure how all that works, but I do know that money's following. And I had that on my list, and I'm sure that caused a shock to the public school systems. However, are we remembering that those students then are no longer having to be funded in the public schools? They're getting funded wherever the other choice, or maybe they went to just a different district? So that money is following the students. Therefore, if a school district lost that student, they don't have to fund that student anymore. We've got to remember that this input and output work together, okay? That was a point I wanted to make. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Borthman, 324 University Circle Council, plus. One point I forgot to bring up, this, I saw a survey of the whole state of Iowa, and not too long ago, and Potawatomi County has one of the highest tax rates per acre in the state.
Thanks, Roger. All right, anyone else in the room? Is there anyone on teams who would like to speak during this public hearing time? If so, raise your hand and you will be admitted into the room.
You ready? Keep in mind, we have nothing to do with the school taxation, they're, they're their own taxing entity.
We voiced our opinion to Trainer.
Yeah. Out at Crescent, we're almost 60% of our taxes are school. It hurts.
As a county board, I can, I can vouch for this, we work very hard, we have to walk a very fine line. We have to maintain a balanced budget, which we have, I'm very impressed with the actions we've taken this, this year already. But, you know, we're, we are also under higher authorities, you know, the federal government, the state government. Really, there's, we've been, we are dictated to ourselves. And also inflation, you know, you look at gas taxes, we had a comment from our county sheriff not too long ago, just uniforms for county deputies and so forth has have doubled in the last year or two. And, you know, they get, they get an allowance for that, but, you know, they're, they're, they're in a hard place too. And you talk about department heads, we work very hard to maintain, to retain our employees, especially our department heads. You know, you look at the, the county, the county attorney office, I think Matt Wilber does a fantastic job at what he does. We do want to retain him. He's been here for quite a few years, I, you know, and he's an attorney. And he could go other places, and that's what we're facing, our 911 operators are another example. We want to retain our 911 operators, we can't hire enough qualified applicants for those positions. And then, once they get employed and they look, they, they, they learn their, their duties, they can go other places too. Across the river is one place. We're facing a lot of, a lot of competition with, with those, those kinds of employment opportunities here in Potawatomi County. Competition from across the river with Douglas County, Sarpy County. We have a great staff of county employees, and again, we want to retain those employees because they're great people. So, again, we're working a very fine line, walking a very fine line. And we try our best. The five of us took no pay this year because we realized, you know, we're, we're, we're right there on the front lines. And we understand, I certainly understand all of your concerns about taxes. It's again, I've been very hard to walk that fine line to balance our budget and still to provide the services, county level services that we do provide. We may very well have to take a cut at some point. Like those cuts are going to be in number of employees and number of, the type of county services that are available to all of you folks. So, we'll, we'll face that when it comes.
One more question, or one more statement, question, whatever? So, what work has gone into maybe taking the burden off property, putting it somewhere else, maybe in the sales tax or some other revenue source to even it out? Because you know that non-property owners, you know, they don't have to go through the, the additional taxes that property owners do, so, you know, maybe it's, you know, thinking out of the box on the different tax portions. Sales tax is a huge issue.
That'd be a state issue, we can't, we can't do anything with sales tax. But the state is looking at that.
And you, I'm sure you have rhetoric with the state on, I guess I don't know what kind of interaction there is with county and the state as far as, you know, options. I mean, do you voice your opinion on what, you know?
Yeah, have you ever been one of the legislative coffees they've had? Okay, and that's the best place for you to, and us to speak to them. And then we have county days where we go up there and talk to them directly.
Okay.
So.
No, again, and we did talk about that at the last conference. Thank you.
So the state last year, in their legislative session, they made some changes to the property taxes. And they gave the state, or the cities and the counties and the schools, new instructions to work by. Larry, you pointed out the flaws in the form, well, that was a new form that just came out, and I think they pieced it together, thinking big picture, they weren't thinking drilling it down to a specific property. So, I know that we've been collecting data from everybody who's called in, questioning the form, questioning the process. I'm planning on providing feedback back to the state so that they can understand what tweaks maybe they need to make on that form to make it more clear what they're trying to say. This is the first time that they've done this. Typically, when we have a budget hearing, we don't have public that comes. So this notice did its job by providing us a chance to hear from all of you, whether it was during non-working time or working time. But hearing from you what your concern's on, and I think that's probably a success that the state legislators had in mind. They wanted to put you in front of us so that we could hear your concerns firsthand. And again, I thank you all for coming out in the elements today and, and coming to speak. We will, this is the first time we've had to do this, so we will think about how we can publicize two public hearings possibly next year if the state doesn't change the rules on how we can get more people to, to visit. But I know that the cities, the school districts are having people show up for their meetings, and that's never happened historically. So the, the statement is doing its job.
Question, did you mail out the statement or did the state?
The county mailed out the state, the statements.
We got ours on a Friday or a Monday meeting, that's a little bit close. You know, they planned on nobody being there, had we not made phone calls, nobody would have been there.
And that's on the suggestion list of, of things that they need to, to take. But it was quite an effort, the county had to accumulate the information from the cities and from the schools and feed it all into a formula, and then send it to the state, and then the state sent it back so that we could mail out our, print out our statements. And we had to hire a third-party company to put those statements together, but they went out in the mail according to the, the timeline that we were provided. But we, it's just one of those tweaks, yeah, five days.
Five-day turnaround timeline, which is... Exactly.
One more, can I make one more comment?
I think we're done.
For 31 minutes? Okay.
All right.
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Right.
Also, it is.
Motion by Melvin, second by Shay to close the public hearing. Melvin, will you please call the roll?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Whitman.
Aye.
Melvin.
Aye.
Jay.
Aye.
Man Jorgens.
Aye. Mr. Barrier, you asked a question on the, where the increase in cost came from, I want to address that for you. Through our property insurance increase and workman's comp increase, that was about a $700,000 increase just for those two. Our health insurance for employees went up 400,000. And then salaries for our employees were part of that increase, as well as, we're all aware, our fuel costs are higher, our rock for our roads are higher, any kind of equipment that we either need in secondary roads or vehicles for the sheriff, those are higher. Our paving, any paving we do, whether it's asphalt, concrete, it costs more to do that. And last but not least, and if it were me, our prisoners would get a 10 cup of water and a bologna sandwich. However, we can't do that, we have to provide a balanced meal, and the cost of food for, for that is, is an increase as well. So, we're doing everything we can, believe me, I, I'm with you, I think we pay plenty in property tax. We're at the point where we just can't take anymore, and I'm fully aware of that. But we still have to run the county and protect you. Real quick, since I've been on the board, the, I can provide this to you if you need it. The levy rate for the general basic fund has went down 42 cents. The debt service levy rate has went down 23 cents. And the rural basic levy has went down nine cents. So, believe me, I don't want to pay anymore either. This board works really hard to only levy what we need to provide services that you expect. We're pretty tight on this board, so we, we, I don't want to raise taxes. But, you know, the costs and inflation and some of the things that the state does affects us. When, when the state give us the senior citizen discount on your property taxes, that exemption, I signed up for it, but guess what? They didn't provide any funding for it. So, we're giving you money back, so now we have less to run the county with. And, you know, it's things like that that, that put a lot of pressure on us. You know, we have union negotiations that... You know, we have union negotiations that, um, actually they went fairly well this year, but all those things, uh, play a part in the levy. We're doing all we can, believe me.
Thanks. I, I was going to give you guys kudo by saying that you're actually one of the lowest increases at 5.4%. Los Central is 15%. Can you imagine that? Uh, City of Councils is 9%. Trainer was like 6.6%. Uh, I have stuff in O Valley that was 9%. So, you know, you're actually low, on the lower side of all of the increases I've seen in my practice. So, uh, but everybody still feels that from all the other areas.
One, uh, one more thing. Two years ago, uh, the state took over mental health. And this county had a 39 cent levy for mental health. The state didn't make any requirements that you had to cut that levy. You could use it and spend it somewhere else if you wanted to. This board said that levy was for mental health. The state took over the costs. We dumped the 39 cents. Where we were one of 33 counties that got rid of that levy altogether. Sixty-six counties out of the 99 decided they were going to spend it somewhere else. So believe, that's just another thing that, uh, we, we, we did to try to do everything we can to lessen the burden on the taxpayers.
If I were to say one more thing too, uh, I was at a meeting, I spent maybe a month or so ago, other county supervisors around the area. Uh, Potawatomi County has an advantage that no other county has in our area. I'm talking Montgomery County, Cass County, Ringo County. Uh, we're still growing. Uh, our tax base is still expanding. People are moving in to Councils, to Potawatomi County. Uh, and that's, that is a big advantage. Also, it puts pressure on property values, you know? I mean, you, you don't have just other, your, your, your farmer neighbor, uh, competing for your, if you want to sell your farm, but you have other entities, address, uh, address utilization, uh, residential growth, that kind of thing, puts pressure on the values of, of property in Potawatomi County. Those other counties don't have that going for them. Uh, they, they are under the gun and they have a heck of a time meeting their budgets. Uh, but again, it's an advantage that I'll take. I appreciate it.
I'm from the Crescent area and that has changed so much since I've been a child. People are moving in and one of my neighbors just sold his house for over three quarters a million. And there's about five other houses right by him that sold for five and 600. Every time they brag about making money on their property, our valuations go up and it hurts. You know? It's great when you sell. And then again, farm values out there are just, they're crazy. I, 10,000 an acre plus. And it's like, how can you make money there? So.
You can't. You can't.
No, it's, it hurts.
Has to stop somewhere.
This, this.
Just trying to pencil a third of that out and make it pay, just pay for itself.
It can't.
It does work.
This board really appreciates everyone coming in and talking to us. We are listening to you. We're doing our damnedest to do what we can, okay? Without cutting services. You know, our roads engineer, that'd be terrible if we get a blizzard like we did in January and three weeks later you're waiting for snowplow. They work pretty hard, those roads guys do. You know, everybody complains about different times. But then like Mr. Whitman said, our gravel costs, you go out to the quarry out here. I remember when it went up to seven dollars a ton. Wouldn't that be great? It's just crazy. And you do it for a mile. I pencil it out and it's, just goes nuts, so. I want to thank everybody for coming in.
Yeah, I would, I just thank everyone for coming in too. You can give them your chon line, but we have at least, and I think twice, done evening meetings for this budget and had less people than we have here today. So we have done that, uh, and since, since my time being here. Uh, so I, I don't know what the, what the answer is, but, um, certainly, uh, would be open to that. So that's what we want to try to do next year. Then that'd be great.
When you did the wind towers, you had a lot of people here and you also had a lot of people in Oakland, so.
Yeah.
That was a nice.
Yes.
Yeah, the one in Oakland.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and then we will reconvene with our regular board meeting.
So move.
Second by Shay, second by Jorgensen to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thanks again for everybody for coming in. You're welcome to stay.
I listen to you.
Well, you've always been there. You're standing there without a key. What goes in the top?
Yeah. Not much. Oh, yeah. And they wrote in here, they thought we were.
It's not many people shut up, you know, for all the letters.
All right. I will now open our regular board meeting. And I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I do want to make a correction on the scheduled, on the minutes from last week's meeting. Um, just to clarify, um, there is, um, a motion that was made last week to award a bid for asbestos abatement. That was for removal in the annex building. And I've asked Jeanette to clarify that, that that's where that was at, so that it doesn't get confused.
I wasn't part of that motion. I didn't say these next. I didn't.
Well, it didn't get captured in the minutes.
I think you did.
Well, I'll work on that a little bit.
I'll make the motion to, um, approve the consent agenda without change. The annex building in minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Bell and a second by Jorgensen to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Right, starting with our scheduled sessions, members from the Potawatomi County Prevent Child Abuse Council Thriving Families Alliance, they are here for a discussion and/or decision to approve and sign proclamation designating the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I have a proclamation to read. Lucy, did you want to say anything beforehand or?
Not at all, maybe one of the other ladies would like to say something. Carrie?
I will, um, thank you for having us today. We do appreciate this. Um, so just thank you for the opportunity and for the proclamation of helping Potawatomi County prevent child abuse. And then we also extend our invitation for our family fun fair that will be on Saturday, April 13th at the, uh, Charles Laken campus from 12 to 2:00. It's open to the community, free of charge, and just a lot of great other community, um, resources will be there for families that come through. So thank you again.
With that, I will read the proclamation by the Potawatomi County Board of Supervisors. Um, Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2024. Whereas our children are our most valuable resource and provide hope for the future. And whereas child abuse and neglect can have long-term effects that have lasting consequences for victims, affect every segment of our community. And whereas together we can support safe, healthy families in our community by partnering to protect children, finding solutions with input and action from everyone. And whereas communities must make every effort to support every child to have a great childhood and ensure families have the support needed to raise their children in safe nurturing environments. Whereas we can promote the well-being of children and families, build resilience and help to lead or help to heal trauma. Now therefore, we Potawatomi County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Okay, second.
Motion by Jorgensen, second by Shay to approve and sign the proclamation designated the month of April 2024 as National, as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Roll call, please.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Shay.
Aye.
Mel.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Thanks for all you do, ladies.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
I, I'd like to mention too that the lights on the courthouse will be shining in blue during the month of April in honor of.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now just quick, again, you all picture.
Want them up here? Actually, we got.
Good timing.
Hold on up there. And right here?
Sure.
Sure.
I don't have to hand them so tall.
I know.
Stand on the chair.
Oh, Chris, you're taller. Yeah, let me. Angle.
You in?
See you in here.
They like.
But.
Let's see.
Yeah.
You see everybody?
Okay, wow, we can get Supervisor Miller in this one. You get on time, that's kind of mature.
You get a lot of guff over this. Super.
Got a cell phone here. Move a little closer with this.
You gonna go to sleep?
Nope, it's good.
Where you gonna put your pinwheels around the courthouse, Jordan?
Take two, I'd like one.
Okay. Hopefully there's one in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
No pinwheels anywhere?
I mean, we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. We'll see you then.
All right.
Thank you.
Sign it, make your Melvis to sign it.
Oh, yep, we'll do that.
Will you take it in and have Jeanette make a copy?
I will do.
You got a thing in the newspaper over this?
Well, I'm not sure yet. I'm, I'm sort of filling in for Jessica. But I will, uh, see what.
They need to have it.
Yep, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have a proclamation for National County Government Month. It's April 2024.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve. Might not have a little earlier, but I will now.
Second.
Motion by Shay, second by Bell to approve and sign the proclamation designating the month of April 2024 as National County Government Month. And let me read this proclamation. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 330 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas Potawatomi County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, under the leadership of National Association of Counties President Mary Jo McGuire, NACO is highlighting county leadership through the lens Forward Together, celebrating the role of county governments in connecting, inspiring, and leading as intergovernmental partners. And whereas, that role includes a responsibility to inspire county residents to engage with their communities and to lead by highlighting our strength as intergovernmental partners. And whereas, each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Potawatomi County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. Approved the second day of April 2024. All right, so we had a motion as second. Did we vote on it? Need a roll call.
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Shay.
Aye.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
And Mel.
Next up, Becky Lenahan, Finance and Tax Officer from the Auditor's Office. Discussion and/or decision on County Fiscal Year 2425 Budget and to set date for public hearing on said fiscal budget 2425.
Good morning. I believe I emailed you, uh, what will be published in the newspaper. Um, I've got it all entered into the Department of Management site and would like to have the meeting, uh, budget hearing at 10 a.m. on April 23rd.
I'll make the motion, uh, setting the time and place for the public hearing on our 2024, 2025 budget for April 23rd at 10 o'clock. My second.
A motion by Whitman, a second by Jorgensen to approve the public hearing on our county 2425 budget for April 23rd at 10 a.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you. Oh, we'll see you next.
Thank you, Becky. All right. Andrew Moats, Recorder. Discussion and/or decision to approve and authorize Board to sign Resolution Number 28-2024 entitled Resolution Approving Appointment of Deputy Recorder.
So move.
Wow. Um, I'll just say, I had Lynn Harrington retire last week after 40 years with the county. Um, so I have a vacant deputy position and I'm appointing Kathy to fill it. No reservations about Kathy. She's, I think she's one of the most helpful people in the building. They're just going to do a fantastic job, so. So.
Good move, Andrew.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's always been nice working with her on some, some of the other things as well, so congratulations.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion by Whitman, a second by Bell to approve and authorize the board to sign Resolution Number 2824. Melvin, will you please call the roll?
Chairman Miller.
Aye.
Supervisors, Bell.
Aye.
Whitman.
Aye.
Shay.
Aye.
And Jorgensen.
Aye.
That is the fastest I've ever seen Supervisor Whitman approve.
That's how good she is.
That's right. Yeah, thank you for helping me out with that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Becky.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't give her a gun.
Needed to see Lynn retire, but hopefully she's napping.
All right, next up, John Raspison, uh, Engineer. Discussion and/or decision to approve the final voucher to Western Engineering for Project STBG-SWAP-CO78, parentheses, 204. John?
Yeah, in your package is the final voucher. You can sign the last page. If you approve it, it releases retainage to the contractor for $30,000. And this was the project from Highway 6 North to G30 on L66. So that southern portion recently completed.
So move. Second.
Motion by Whitman, second by Bell. Additional discussion? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks, John.
When will that start?
You're the one that signed all that.
Finished on.
The inning's done.
And the paperwork, which takes.
Okay, next on the agenda is discussion and/or decision on the Anix Building. And I know right now we're in the process of secondary roads moving out of the building. We've had a little bit of conversation about what the future for that building lot includes, and the board really hasn't had a chance to discuss it. So this is our opportunity right now to kind of talk about what our thoughts are on the building and to entertain recommendations from buildings and grounds as far as what their thoughts are.
Sounds like there's a lot of work to make it anything viable for us, correct?
Quite a bit of work that needs to be done.
Yeah, we're going to retain it.
Yeah, if we're going to keep it.
I'm all for it, yeah. Turning that thing down.
I know we've got a need for additional parking for our employees. And how many parking spots do we think we could get into that space if we?
48. Probably 48.
That's a lot of parking. Who we got out there?
54.
54?
Yeah.
Jamie with GIS kind of drew up this rendering of what the parking lot could look like possibly.
Okay. A building study back in 2018 showed that the building itself had inefficient windows, an old mechanical system, outdated electrical, needed fire alarms and sprinklers, countless ADA issues. Basically, the building is structurally sound, but it's just built into a way that it's, it needs a lot of updates.
What would be good for if we did keep it? We couldn't use storage there without.
It wouldn't be ideal for storage.
No, not with the second floor.
If we were to renovate it, I mean, it would be a complete, it'd be a complete redo of the entire site.
Including restrooms.
Yeah.
Plumbing.
Yeah.
Electrical system.
Yep.
And heating air.
In road, yep, the whole nine yards. We have some roofin' issues. Yep.
With the addition to the courthouse here, we've moved most of them over here. Have them in one, one spot.
It is part of our urban renewal plan. It's always been kind of the way we were moving was we were going to demolish the building. So that's why we were headed in that direction. I wanted to make sure that we had some numbers on hand so you guys could know what the costs were going to be for that.
I'm moving in the same direction you will, just a little bit.
When, in 2018, when that HCM did that assessment of our campus and the buildings that we had, I think their estimate, although it was combined, their estimate to take down the old services building, the annex building, was 150,000, I believe. Also, in that assessment was, this is from 2018, the cost to renovate that building at that point was 1.6 million. And I'm not going to say you can double it, but pretty close to doubling it in 2024 if we were to renovate that space. And I think that just the configuration, the, I think that the, although we haven't had an engineer study done on the structural capacity of those walls, some of those walls are load-bearing. You know, you'd be limited to what you could do in that thing. The highest and best use of that property, as Scott would know, would probably be a parking lot. And we are short of parking for our patrons and maybe even some protective department heads or other officials that are in this building. I think the most prudent thing for us to do would be that when John walks out the door, we lock it up and begin the demolition part of it. Jason has received some cost estimates for the removal of that building. And at the time in 2018, I think when it was broken down, it would have been about $50,000 for that to come down. And Jason's lowest bid is 49. So at least the demolition costs haven't gone up, but my recommendation, let me change that. My motion would be to remove the annex building once the secondary roads team has moved to the new facility. And ask Jason to again review the bids for demolition that he has and come back to us with a recommendation on the contractors. My second.
I think we need more bids. I think we were discussing it for the first time today. I think we need to make sure that the public knows that this opportunity exists and that we, we allow additional people to bid on the removal.
Agreed.
So if Tim doesn't want to amend his motion, we need to act on that motion. His motion was to accept one of the bids that's been submitted already.
It was to review the bids Jason has for demolition and bring that number back to us for approval. I didn't make a motion to hire anybody that he's.
Okay.
So to review bids, you would have more bids then?
Yes.
Review.
Yeah, definitely. Same, same thing, I think. Yeah. And that demo bid needs to be honed down, the two bits that I've got. We're quite apples to apples, so we're going to have to go back out, refine that RFP and make sure that we're getting, you know.
Is there any items in there that are of historic value, crystal chandeliers or anything like that?
The only thing I was thinking of, some of that brickwork on the side was, it was church and Sunday school, correct? Is there some sort of emblem or cross or something of whether it's salvageable or not?
I don't know.
I would think that'd be salvageable. I don't know if the church would be interested in that or not.
Yeah.
We got to keep all the bathroom doors to show everybody how narrow, how narrow they are. It's hard to get in and out of those.
Jason, when you get ready to put that bid together, put some, put a timeframe on the demolition.
Yeah.
And I don't know, that's something you might have to work with Christian on. Do we consider liquidated damages if they don't get it done in the time we will say proposed? I mean, you know, whatever you have to do, just, you know, make sure it's very clear that once, once the contract's awarded, they don't get a sit on it for six months, like for eight months to take it down. Make sure the bill is acceptable to us and all that. I mean, you know what you're doing. You admit to what you're doing, so. Just make sure it's a plea.
So you're bringing, you're allowing others to bid on this?
Yes.
Okay. Is that within your motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a motion by Wickman and a second, was it by Jorgensen? All right. To remove the building and/or buildings and grounds to bring bids back for demolition. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
And should I start talking to, looking for bids to somebody to engineer our parking lot that may go there someday?
I think we get the building down. And then we do that, is what I think.
Okay, we'll have to do a geo study of that area too prior to doing a parking lot there. But no, that's something that we can schedule to. They'll have to, you know, do the ground study, so.
What are you going to make us do with drainage, you think?
I don't know that. I'm hoping, I'm hoping not a lot, but we'll have to wait and find out what the city's going to require. I was thinking about reaching out to Ralph's Engineering to get a cost to engineer that parking lot for us.
What engineer?
Ralph's.
Do we think the 45 additional spaces is going to be adequate for the current needs and the future needs of the courthouse? Or do we need to look at putting a double-decker in there?
Well, the cost to build a parking garage was just too economically high for the county to afford when we were looking at doing it back in 2018. I think that any parking spots that we can get that are, you know, near the courthouse are going to be much needed and valued.
I think if I recall the discussion, Chair President Miller, this was before we got the Public Health Department. The cost to put a two-story parking structure on the, where the annex facility was, was 5 million.
Oh, my goodness.
That was in 2018.
Pretty doubled again.
So.
No reason to look at that. All right, any other questions? Right.
Good.
Next, I have a certificate to present employee recognition for years of service from ISAC. And for 35 years of service, we hereby express our sincere appreciation to Penny Ravlin for dedicated service to Potawatomi County Government. And it is signed by Barry Anderson, ISAC President, and Bill Peterson, the ISAC Executive Director. Any of you will come forward. Should have got a frame to put it. That's okay. Just makes me feel old. I don't look at all good.
Thanks, Becky. Thanks.
Not going to change your assessment, anyway.
Property values. All right, next on the agenda, discussion and/or decision on alternate representative for the East and West Nishnabatta Waterhead Management Authority. And I'm going to ask for Scott Bell to help me with this one.
Well, they wanted an alternative on there.
Thanks, you guys.
It's, they meet four times a year out at Oakland. And it also, you can usually get on by Zoom if you want. But I've been on there for seven, eight years now, I think.
How many counties are in that, Scott?
Oh, God. Bunch.
And it's good for all of us to go?
Pardon?
It's good for the whole board to go, or it's just?
You can't go. Well, we'd have to tell them to go.
Two reps.
We only get one vote. One on the east and one on the west, but it's got all from, oh, man.
Well, for West Nishnabatta, you've got Audubon, Carroll, Crawford, Fremont, Mills, Montgomery, Page, Potawatomi, and Shelby. And from east, it covers Adair, Audubon, Carroll, Cass, Fremont, Guthrie, Montgomery, Page, Potawatomi, and Shelby.
And then there are cities that are on there too.
Right.
There's whatever the number of cities and then the number of soil-water conservation districts are on there also. So there's.
Practice would be for somebody that you can be there, that person would fill in for you?
Yeah.
I'll nominate Jeff as the alternate.
You got to make it to the meetings or you're voted into something.
Yes, yeah, I know, yeah.
All right. You'll do it? Four times a year?
Yep.
I'll make room. Four weeks. Four weeks, okay.
Yeah.
They'll notify you or you notify me, that is okay. You be there.
It's usually, well, I don't know why they.
Go and sit in. Ah, yeah. You know, Scott's still there.
Nine, usually nine o'clock in the morning.
Where do they, where do they usually meet at?
Open community building.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, these people come from, like she read off, there's.
The mayor.
There's mayors and supervisors and soil-water conservation. They call trustees. Missioners.
Do we need to add this to our annual list of supervisor appointments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I think Tim's already.
Tim, did you already do that?
I don't think we need a motion or anything to do that. I think that we just deport him as a, instead of a secondary.
It's the chairman's appointment. If they're requesting an alternate and the chairman appoints. You're right, you don't really need that.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Good man.
Learn a lot on those.
All right, next up is discussion and/or decision on secondary employment policy for department heads. And just for clarification, this is for the Board of Supervisors so we can respond to requests that come from department heads. There is an existing policy in place currently for all other employees. And our county attorney's office and human resource director have come up with some supplemental procedures that could work specifically for the department heads. And I know that, gee, Kristin made some tweaks to it this morning. I gave you the revised version. We really haven't had a chance to review it. If we want to table this for next week, if you want to take action on it today.
I think, I think we should discuss it today and then, I agree with you, since we just got the changes, we could put it off the menu.
I'd like that. I read the other one and I haven't read this one yet.
Okay.
I do have some questions and concerns about it, though. Discuss.
Yes, perfect. Let's go.
Is Jana in here?
Yeah.
Come on up, Jana.
Does everybody have the version with the logo on the top?
Okay.
Yeah, you just passed that out.
Jana, Kristin, I know you guys worked on this. I have some questions. If we have a department head that wants to farm part-time, does he have to fill out one of these forms? A permission slip to farm?
I mean, technically, as I, if we're talking about the definition of secondary employment, if you're getting an income, I feel technically that would be secondary employment and we would ask them to fill out a form as, as we're going down this road right now, which we could change.
Why do we care if they farm on the weekends? Or do they farm after they get off work? I mean, I just think that, I personally don't like this at all. I think it's way too intrusive. You know, what if a department head wants to switch cars at the railroad on Saturday and Sunday? Do we need that? I mean.
Technically, today, we would. We would ask for that unless we write something different.
Department head wants to start a drywall business, do we need to know that?
Right.
I just think that, I think this thing needs some more work. And I, I think that. And I, I think that, uh, I also believe that the policy that we currently have for the rest of our employees. Needs to make a, a trip through the Policy Review Committee as well because, quite frankly, if we have employees that want to do something else. Off of their eight-to-five job with Potawatomi County or. Do what you want. Now, if we have a department head. That wants to, um, perform a function with another government entity, then I think we should be aware of it. If it's anything other than that, quite frankly, I don't really care.
I'm not, I'm not, uh, interested in, you know, individual, uh, employments, you know, for, for supervising, you want to farm or you start a business. But those who, uh, may have, uh, conflicts with their, with their, with their position with the county, for instance, lobbyists. I, you know, if, if, if there's a department head that wants to take on a lobbyist type of job, I think we ought to be notified and, and. Either give an approval of some kind or, or, or deny that in my opinion. Okay, that's where I'm at.
Because I feel like we, we could go one of two ways. One is every secondary employment goes on a form and is reviewed for a conflict of interest. Or what is the real definition of conflict of interest? Because then what you're putting it on is the employee to make that decision to then give it to you. Do, do you see what I mean? And so that's what, if we feel that, because conflicts of interest do exist, we know that. And it is important for, um, even not just department heads, but for employees to, to keep that in mind too. You know, specifically in the sheriff's office, if they're going to go do private security for someplace, that's something that needs to be reviewed by the sheriff. And so those are important pieces. Right, if, if someone's going to do, go ahead.
You're saying by the sheriff, not by the board?
By the sheriff.
That's the sheriff's deal.
Because that's an employee who then is reviewed by their department head, which would be the sheriff. So when we're talking about those, so which way do we want to go? Do we want to review all and who, who makes that definition of conflict of interest? Because I feel like that's kind of where we're a little stuck. And then how? And then what's the process?
Okay, um, you know, and, and another example, for instance, uh, say a department head has some type of outside employment where he's paid a billion dollars. Okay, in that instance, uh, that, that, that could be payments for, you know, services rendered for that, you know, I mean. There's the conflict of interest in that.
Well, I don't think the cost is a conflict of interest. And Matt Wilber, when he was here a couple of weeks ago, had said that the pay that the person receives doesn't make any difference. That should be of no consideration other than the duties. The duties show if there's a conflict of interest, the pay should have nothing, no, no bearing on it.
Can the HR department make that determination whether that, that secondary employment should come before the board or not? Can you make that decision?
I would in conjunction with the county attorney's office.
Think we do.
Not by my.
Policy.
Yeah, if that's how you wanted to write it, that's not how we do it today. Sorry if that was your question. That's not how we do it today. Right, so, so the, the board is the supervisor for the department heads. So that's kind of why we have, you know, as we've laid out the procedure, you know, if I want to have secondary employment, I just fill out a form and give it to my department head. And so I think that. Most of those secondary employment, you know, opportunities aren't going to be a problem, aren't going to have a conflict. If it's farming, it's going to be very easy to just basically rubber stamp, say, yep, we're good, we have no issue. So, you know, if you want to have a more thorough policy, we can obviously look into that and kind of lay out specific employment opportunities that might be conflicts. Or if we want to do it kind of how we are doing it right now, we have the form, you take a quick look at it, rubber stamp it if there's no issue, if there's any issue, excuse me, issue, then that's what.
I, I would be willing to give Jana and just you, you know, whatever, uh, responsibility to make that determination. And if you feel that it needs to, needs to be further looked at by the board, that's the way I would go.
But, but how do we do that? Do they put it on the agenda or discussion by the board?
Yes, yes.
But is that if we feel that's a conflict, then it comes on as a discussion and or giving that department head the opportunity to discuss it in closed session?
Yes. That's me.
I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we addressed my initial question. If a department head wants to farm, do they need to get a permission slip from us to farm?
No, I, well, you know, you will see that as.
So is, as it stands right now, any secondary employment would be, you'd have to fill out a form and it would have to be signed off on. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a agenda item. I think we're proposing that it would go through the received and filed, like a, a change in pay form. If there are no issue, I, I'm pretty sure that everybody on the board would agree that a farming operation would likely not have conflicts with the county. So. It'd be pretty easy to just rubber stamp it more or less.
I've got a, I've got a question real quick. Uh, are department heads required to be in their office a certain amount of time each day?
Not exactly. The, the department head contract does label us as exempt employees. And so the Department of Labor then explains what exempt employees are. So an exempt employee is required to do their job and get paid a set amount. So that amount doesn't change, meaning we don't earn overtime, we also can't get paid less, but exempt employees receive a set amount. Whether they work thirty-five hours a week or fifty-five hours a week. The, the department head contract does discuss that the expectation is forty hours a week. It doesn't say that they need to have office hours or how long they need to be in their office, specifically because everybody's juggling, John could be out on the road. And so to be in the office, you know, of course, we know that the courthouse is open eight to four-thirty, you know, so for example, for me, I'm here eight to four-thirty because I know that's when the courthouse is open. John might come in at six because his employees are working at six. So it really does vary based on the job.
Well, Tim brings up a good point because, you know, there's, there's harvest time and there's planting time. You know, if, if a department head takes off two weeks for harvest, takes off two weeks for planting, I would see that, I would say that would be a co, a conflict in life, unless he takes vacation.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Right, yes.
And that's what the policy says.
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, they would need to use vacation time, not sick time, but vacation time or the personal leave.
Thank, correct.
And what they're doing on the weekends or evenings, obviously, nobody has a problem with that because that's outside of, you know, regular business hours or what would be their regular business hours.
And, and I don't know how long this secondary employment policy has been in the handbook and what the history for why it was put in there. Why it's being discussed today is trying to flowchart how we process an application that was submitted, so.
Sure, I believe it's been in the employee handbook since two thousand and nine. Um, that was well before my time, so I don't know the history of, um, why it was put in there. Were there an issue and is that why it was put in there?
I've been. Questions on whether they were papers eligible for the work that they were doing. And there's one incident, and then there was another where papers looked at what the secondary employment was and they determined that, uh. What they were doing was okay, it was an paper's eligibility. On the other hand, uh, what this one employee was doing for the county and his, uh, uh, secondary employment was hired out by the sheriff to do the same work that he was doing for the county. And, uh, that required paper's eligibility and that's might have been what, uh. Brought it to our attention that I think it was just a matter of awareness, so that we, you know, even if somebody's farming. It's a, you know, it's a slam dunk, but at least the communication, the awareness is there, so that we know, uh. So you guys know what's going on with your carbon hands. But in other employees, that communication needs to happen, so we, you know, whether there is a conflict of interest or if there's paper's eligibility there. Because papers wants their money. If they're doing the job that's similar to what they're working for, for the county, then, uh. That needs to be known.
And then we go back to your comment, Brian, about if they're functioning with another government entity.
I, I think that's what we really need to know. I agree with, uh, Chairman Wickman. If they're farming, that's their deal. That ain't none of our business.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I said, I, I would.
They got a motorcycle shop, I'll probably be there.
Those, those determinations be made by you folks, and then if you think that we need to review secondary employment for a department head, then I'd be willing to do that. That's fine.
Well, it, since I've been on the floor, I'm not aware of that ever happening.
They still have to have a policy in place, right?
Correct.
Is that what we're talking about right now?
Yes.
Case, in case it ever happens.
I think the only, the only thing the policy needs to say is that if you're doing work for another government entity, entity, similar to the job you have with the county. We should be aware of it. After that. I don't care. I really don't. And they would, they'd need to know. I don't need to know either.
They would make that determination for us, our behalf. We need to, we need to review that we can, or you don't.
And that's what this document would do, is explain how we would review it once it came to us.
I haven't read this, Jana, so I don't know.
I read the previous one. I didn't read this one. What changes are all there?
So, Tim, to your point, um, what do we need to do to be aware of it? Just.
I think our department heads are probably watching this, or we could send out a communication to our department heads, hey, look, if you want second, if you're thinking about secondary employment. With another government agency, make the board aware of it. I mean, I don't see anything more than that.
Good, so.
You know, when it says, it says the department head will fill out the secondary form, that department head will deliver the form to the board secretary. And then the executive sec, assistant will then, will distribute to the, get to the board members. I think it's too broad. I don't think that we need to know any more than. I, I, you know, really, if, if you're going to get, uh. Permission slips, give out permission slips, but leave me off the email chain. Because I really don't care.
Well, let me give you another example. What if a, what if a department head is, is, will be going to work for a contractor who's doing work for the county under his department? I mean, there's an instance, I think, needs to be evaluated.
That's a conflict of interest at that point, isn't it?
That's, that's, that, that's my opinion, okay?
That, that would be conflict.
But to word, to wordsmith it, the way that Jeff is saying it, so if you work for, you know, um. ABC Seamless, what do they do, Windows or something? And they're going to put in Windows down at the VA, they're working government, so does that count? And then who's going to police that? Does that mean then that I would have to do some research onto what that company is and who, who are they doing their contract worth, work with? That would almost be too much.
Jana, I, I, I'm just saying this, if you look at that, you don't, you don't have to dwell into it, but if you look at that and say that could be a possible conflict of interest. That maybe we ought to take a look at, you know, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
You don't, you don't have to do that kind of investigation.
Okay.
Just if, if it appears to be a conflict of interest, it was like, let us make a look.
Sure.
Does it, does it work for you guys?
In conjunction with.
If John hired somebody to clean out our ditches and I wanted to drive a, or not me, but somebody else, one of our other employees wanted to drive the dump truck for the contractor that's digging the ditch?
For the department head too. I'm talking department heads, I'm not talking.
Okay, put Matt Wyatt in there. Put, uh, put Jamie Peterson in there. Can Jamie drive a dump truck for a contractor on the weekend? Absolutely, he can. Do we need to know? Absolutely not.
The contract might be.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think, I think, I think these two could probably make that determination, whether it's, whether it's, uh.
I think that's too broad of conflict or not. It's just too broad, I think. I'm going to look at Tim on this one.
Yeah.
Maybe the department head should certify that it's not a conflict of interest, then if the board decides it is a conflict of interest, then, then Jana's out of the middle. Because you have all these what-ifs, it really should just be on the department head to not put themselves in that situation or the board. So, so I don't know why the, like, I shouldn't be using my credentials in the county that you pay for my continuing education, my license. I, I don't believe I should be able to use that for private business in the county. And I think maybe this department should not be using their credentials that the county's paying for privately, I guess.
Two questions, how would that department head certify? They certi, you said that they would certify that it's not a conflict of interest. How would that happen?
This is a letter to the board. We're supposed to.
So again, it's, it's alerting the board, right? Well, what if, let's use me for an example. I mean, the board hasn't paid for my business degree and my HR training. I came to the county with that. So, so what John would be saying, I could go start my own HR consulting business. It's not a conflict because the board didn't pay for my degree. But if the board did pay for my degree, I'm just.
Well, if they paid for your certification, I'm saying working out of the county too.
Well, in your situation, Jenna, we've paid for a lot of your experience.
You've paid for five years of my experience with the county since I've worked here, but the many years of HR experience I have before that, the county didn't pay for. I just want to make sure that it's clear. That's all it is, is that, is it clear? And you're right, there are a lot of what-if. So we just want a clear, consistent process.
All right, well, how about taking a look at this and then making some revisions, making some changes and try to minimize the, uh. Intrusiveness of this policy and let our employees do what they want for the most part. If it's not affecting Potawatomi County, or they're not working for another government agency in the same field or the same job that we have them working in now. Let them rock on. I don't even need to know.
I'm, I'm guessing that the only way we would hear, you know, a conflict of interest is if whoever works in that department would make a, a complaint. Against the department head, you know, he's not spending a little time on, on, on our issues that we're facing. I'm, I'm just guessing. But there, you know, we need to take something.
I mean, definitely in general, for any reason, if, if you, the five board members who supervise, supervise us department heads. Feel that, yeah, there's not enough time spent at work, duties aren't getting done at any time, I would encourage you to have a conversation with that department head. Uh, to let them know what the expectations are or that the expectations aren't being met, no matter what, regardless of this situation.
You, Jenna, do you currently know of any department head that has a second, a second?
I know of three. Yes.
Yeah, yeah. How, how, how was that handled?
So, different ways, yeah, um, and that's why we're trying to go for, um, consistency differently. I think two were emails, one was hand-delivered, so it, and because it's not clear anywhere how that should be done.
Do you see any conflict of interest, three at all?
I do not. Nothing, I feel, I, but I don't want to speak out of turn, but in conjunction with the county attorney's office.
So it didn't come before us?
Well, you've.
Did it?
Well.
Came to the board.
One, so prior to Susan and Jeff, two came to the board, again.
Through email.
Via email, one via email, one via hand-deliver, a letter. And then since Jeff and Susan have joined, a, a third one now via email that was.
Department hits.
Yes. So it is in your email.
So you guys are going to rework it, and when you do, please take into consideration what the employee handbook says too, so that. Maybe we need to reconvene the policy committee and look at it for all employees to all of the great points that have been brought up. During this discussion.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you so much. Many appointments update from board members. I want to tell everybody, I attended the seven-one-two initiative board meeting last Thursday. And it was very refreshing to see the board still engaged under new leadership. The new CEO, who is Chris LaFerla, is being shared with the C V chamber. And they have a mission, a vision, they are moving full forward. And they're working on a coal, with a coalition effort on housing. And that's what their main purpose was, that's what they were organized for, was to focus on housing in Potawatomi County. And I think they've got that initiative well in hand, and it was refreshing to me to hear that they're moving forward. And it was refreshing to me to hear that they're moving forward.
The seven one-two's mission originally?
Yes.
Was housing?
Well, it was.
So, I think we all received invites to go to this meeting with seven two in the chamber and some facilitator. It's going to facilitate the meeting to decide what they're, what they're going to officially do.
How, how they're going to merge the two boards together.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, I, I originally sat on the seven one-two board and so that was, when it was first formed, uh, and they were supposed to, you know, be working with neighborhoods and bringing people together and such. If they're.
But they're still doing that as well.
Okay.
But the chamber will probably take more of a lead with.
Some of the farmers market.
Right.
That other stuff.
Right.
Okay.
Pardon?
You said there's a meeting?
Well, Chris LaFerla sent out a.
Yeah, I seen that, okay.
Email to us and there was, I don't know, five, six gates and times to go to.
Okay.
I don't know, it was fac, still facilitated, but.
Who sits on, you sit on the seven one-two?
I do.
Uh, since the chamber is kind of, um, finding, they're combining efforts or whatever they're doing. Will, will there still be a seven one-two board?
That's why I re-engaged with it just and follow this whole merger process to see what the end result's going to be. At this point, they don't know what it's going to look like. But they're being intentional to decide the path forward.
God, what was her member, seven two, what was there? There was, is there nine board members?
There's probably twelve of us at the last meeting.
Yeah, but we didn't, we were just.
Ex officios?
Ex officios and.
And so is Iowa West and.
Just a city.
City.
Yeah.
Have ex officio roles.
Yeah.
Brian?
Oh, bike trail, moving ahead with some things and, uh, some land acquisitions. Talked to our rural water guy, Tom Coleman. He's not as fast as we'd like, but he's moving forward. Um, I was up at Hitchcock for, they've got a parking lot they're going to do up there with them. Uh, came to a planning zoning meeting last Wednesday for, for adjustment board. And, uh, listened to some of their stuff. And then, uh, advanced southwest Iowa. They had a meeting last week, so I did not make the legislative coffee like I would have liked to.
Uh, I was also at the, uh, bike trails, uh, meeting. Uh, the Potawatomi County Bike Trails, uh, has joined, right? I think it was a great.
I do too.
Yeah, so, and also, uh, does, does anybody here know the name of the, uh, Council Bluffs Symphony?
Haynesville, yeah.
Haynesville, yes. And that was brought up, I was at Pace, the Pace, uh, uh, board meeting. Uh, they're going to change their name from Haynesville to Council Bluffs Symphony. It's coming up next.
That's what, uh, they did before. Haynesville changed the same thing as Bluffs.
I got one other thing. Friday I went to.
There's an old, old symphony, it was there before the Council Bluffs was making. Okay, this used to be Haynesville before it became Council Bluffs.
Are you doing, Jeff?
Yeah.
I did go up to Jenny Edmondson and toured their new art department, which is opening, I think it was today they were opening. That's the half million dollar gift we afforded them. And holy cow, was I impressed. And there was a lot of people getting tours up there. And, uh, they've got new machines, bigger rooms, better. I was just totally impressed by what they showed us, so. I actually went up there with, uh, Matt Wyatt and toured that, so. Whole lot of people in and out of there, neat setup. I was totally impressed.
Right. Moving on to public comments.
Well, everybody that's cleaned up has already spoken. A lot of them laughed. Shauna did not sign it up, but she's poking it.
That's shocking, shocking.
And we checked the list for sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, most of them were from the family.
Made a list that we checked it twice.
Roger Morrison.
All right, so now we're moving into the budget study session.
We don't have anything today. She doesn't even discuss anything that any of the residents brought up during your first meeting this morning.
Must buy a bunch of Lotto tickets, cause it's up to a billion dollars.
Sounds like a very bad budget idea.